All right, folks, let's start. So good evening. This is the planning board work session for March 26, 2025. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, P. L. 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice that this workshop session, workshop meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a roll call there, Christine, and then I'll tell everybody what we're going to do tonight.
Here.
Theodore Chase?
Here.
Robert LaCourte?
Here.
Shaw Keller?
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq. Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas. Rebecca Hilbert. And Mark Dancy?
Here.
And Chairman Orsini.
Here. So let me, let me take a few minutes to let everybody know what's, what's actually going to happen tonight. So this is a work session of the Planning Board. It's not a public hearing. However, I will open to the public and, and I will give specific direction at that time as to, you know, what the, what, what the, the breadth of what questions we'll take. So this has been a fairly long and involved process to reimagine what the business and industry zone could look like, not only for warehouses but other uses, but principally warehouses seem to be the biggest concern. There have been two public meetings with Dave Roberts, led by Dave Roberts and Mark Healy. Dave Roberts is our consultant. Mark is our, our Director of Planning. So at this point, the public will, actually knows more than the Planning Board. So tonight, this is really for the Planning Board to get acquainted with the output of those meetings and with the specifics of the, of the ordinance that, that Mark has drafted and to ask questions. What will happen after that is there will be a public, a public hearing on a master plan because we have to adopt the master plan amendment for this. So that will be a public hearing. Then it'll go to council, they'll introduce it, they'll refer it back to us. We, we say, yes, we've heard it, we agree with it, and then they'll do their, their second reading and final passage. So that's where we are in the process, and Mark, I'll turn it over to you. Take it away.
All right. So I'm going to, this worked a few minutes ago, so I'm going to try it again. We're going to bring in Dave Roberts, virtually. It's 2025, we can do these things now.
We hope.
Maybe. No, that's the center. There he is. All right. So he can't see you, but we can see. So as the chairman said, this is Dave Roberts from Brightview Engineering, the consultant team that was brought in to help us on this. I don't really need to give much more of an introduction than, than frankly, what the chair already did. I'll just reiterate just the one thing that the chairman said, which is, this is not the end of the road. There's going to be at least two more hearings, one before the Planning Board and one before the council and the ordinance. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave. Well, let me just summarize what the presentation will be. So at the last community meeting, Dave presented the concepts of how light industrial warehouse development would be permitted under this proposal. And it was basically separated into light industrial, medium, and high intensity uses. I'll leave it to Dave to describe that. What the material that's being presented to the Planning Board conceptually is exactly the same as what was presented at the last community meeting, as far as the square footage, the loading docks, those things, again, that Dave will get into the specifics. What's, what's new is there's been more, in a way, meat put on the bones. Dave has prepared the master plan reexa, reexamination document, which describes that, explains the reasons for it, and puts, you know, language that needs to be in those type documents, you know, in the form of a master plan reexamination report. That's what the Planning Board at a future public hearing would consider for adoption. And then similarly, there's a draft ordinance that has been sent to you. Same concept, it's again, the same overall concepts, but in ordinance form with a lot more meat put on the bones. But again, the overall framework is exactly the same as what was presented about a month ago to the, to the larger public. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave.
Good evening, everyone. My name is, as Mark mentioned, is Dave Roberts, the Director of Planning for Brightview Engineering. Probably about, I'd say, almost two years ago, in 2023, we were engaged by the township to conduct really a parallel analysis of both traffic in the BI zone and then land use recommendations with the ultimate objective of generating a, a reexamination report, master plan update that would prepare or that would provide and propose specific recommendations that the township could consider for dealing with this, this tremendous amount of development pressure that you've been under for, for this period of time. I worked with a group of traffic experts at Brightview, led by John Jar, also with Allison Serrano and Joe Fischinger. Effectively, just to give you my purpose tonight, with the, the understanding that you've had the draft reexam report, had, hopefully had a chance to look through it. There's a lot more detail in, in the document itself than I'll, I'll have time to get into tonight, but my purpose really is to give the board kind of an overview, a summary of what's been happening over the last couple of years and some of the thinking behind the proposals that we have for you. In 2023, the traffic work started and actually, we have summarized a lot of the, working back and forth with the township, gathering up all the information on all the development applications that this board has certainly been on the front line regarding over the many, many applications that have come through the board and had come before the township. And the traffic analysis really took a three-prong approach. One was to analyze, there was 14, originally 14 intersections within the BI zone that the township had identified as being intersections that were of concern, that were already experiencing issues during the, the process and analyzing those 14 intersections, which took place in, in the fall of 2023, right in between the start of school and before, it was completed before the, the holiday season traffic issues would, would normally be experienced. So pretty much September, October of 2023 is when that data gathering took place on those 14 intersections. There was, the, the data was gathered, analyzed, modeled by our traffic staff. And well, in, in early 2024, the board, I'm sure is, recalls that, and you then created a, a steering committee to then guide the, the planning effort with the idea that we would start with the traffic analysis and then use that to inform the land use part of the, of the effort. And what I'd like to do is, is share 10 slides with you that will kind of walk you through how that, that process took place. I am going to start that sharing right now. So hopefully you can see the slide behind me. Thank you, Mark. I, I wanted to first begin by acknowledging the members of the ad hoc steering committee that the board appointed and it just, it just, from, from our point of view, from the consultant's point of view, acknowledged the service that they provided to the township with the, the meetings that they attended, with the input that they provided, in many cases, really just taking a lot of their own personal time to look at the data, to ask questions, in some cases, to cause us to even take a second look at a number of things. So I wanted to, I show them here on this, on the first slide, and I wanted to just, to just give them some, some acknowledgement to speak this evening publicly for the, before the board and to thank the board for appointing them for this project. What you'll see is that really what I want to try to do right now is to give a, a little bit of a summary of a public input that we received. And as Mark mentioned before, a lot of this is, if not all of it, is really, has already been provided to the public in summary. The traffic study summary and then the, the master plan recommendations, which are really, really what are detailed in your draft reexamination, master plan update document that you've been This is a slide, I actually added some data or some general information to this slide because my sense is that even though you as board members have been immersed in this for a number of years now, that, that, I know I was not aware of the magnitude of what you've been dealing with until we started to just provide some of these, these statistics for the background in the reexamination report. But as you'll see in the lower left-hand corner of this slide, and just to give you some, some background as to what you're looking at, this is a, this is the parcel data from the township's GIS system showing the, all the different applications. There's 37 in total that were, as, as of October 4th of 2023, when the traffic study was done, and, and our traffic folks kind of summarized what the, what types of applications and what the status of them was. And the, the larger photograph to the right shows the entire township, or at least the most of the township, as part of a satellite image. And the, the, what you'll see is in the lower right-hand portion of that map is the southern portion of the business and industrial district. And the upper left-hand, that sort of the northern tip of the township is the larger northern business and industrial zone. And all of the, the coloring, the hatching that you see, as you see in the center on the right, whatever's shown in white, in shaded in white, has already been constructed and is occupied, and these are specifically warehouse-type applications, type of development. Whatever's shaded in green has been approved and is under construction. Whatever is shown in orange is, are applications that are basically in the pipeline, so they have not been acted upon. And then there's one or two sites or properties or parcels that are shaded in red, and those applications were applications that were, were received but denied. And between 2018 and October 18th of 2023, so right in the middle of that was the pandemic, the, the years of the pandemic, 20 and 21 predominantly, you had 37 applications totaling 7,793, 641 square feet of warehouse space. And of that total, about 2.6 million square feet had been built and occupied at that point in time. So the, the reason for bringing that up is, in addition to just providing you a, a sort of a visual in terms of just how many sites were involved, have been involved in these, in this period of time, especially in the upper left corner where we, we zoomed, we kind of zoomed in on that northern business and industrial zone to see just, you know, how many parcels were involved, how many acres, how much acreage was involved in all of that, specifically warehouse development. I thought it was significant, and it also gives an idea of why the 14 intersections, most of them are in that northern section, which is the closest to Interstate 287, which is key because access to Interstate 287 is, is obviously one of the drivers for the pressure that the township has been under for this type of development, especially as is, was, has been sort of accelerated and sped up by the pressure for online e-commerce that started before the pandemic and then just got, and just exploded during pandemic and has continued since. The public, in terms of the public input summary, you can see there's, there's a couple of main themes that ran through it, and this was not only just comments that we took in the, in the notes from the meeting, but emails that were received from, or by the township from the public since then. And the, Mark had created a, a specific dedicated page for this study, for this joint traffic and, and land use effort, and provided all of the, the documents that were generated during the course of this process. And then had a, had the ability to be able to receive those emails, which he then shared with me, and then I shared with the rest of the Brightview team, and then these are, these kind of reflect a summary of the themes that those comments represented. And the, the first one talks about the fact that in the first community meeting, there were two additional intersections that were raised as concerns by the public that we ended up adding to the analysis. And that, that was done probably during the summer of, of 2024. And then they, they added some, they, they calculated a factor, sort of a corrective factor to account for the, the additional trips that would be generated during, when schools in session to try to make those, that make that data comparable. And so we did analyze those two additional intersections, making it a total of 16 that were part of the traffic study. And then another theme that came out of it was, it wasn't just the, the issues that were going on with, for example, making left turns during the, either the AM peak or the PM peak hour at, at certain intersections where the, the level of service or the, the time that people were waiting to be able to make that turning movement had reached the point of failure at several of those intersections. It was more, it was also a broader concern about the quality of life that, that affected residential areas that were surrounding this business industrial zone at the northern portion of, of the township. And that they, but that we should be concerned about and try to consider as much as we could, the impact of noise, air pollution, and, and other associated impacts, especially of truck traffic, a large truck traffic. And then the other theme that came out of these meetings is that if we're going to permit these types of uses that, that generate a lot of truck traffic, that we should, we should direct them away from, as far away from the residential areas as possible, and also as close to the interchange as with Interstate 287 as possible. And that whatever regulations we would come up with, the concern, a lot of the public concern had to do with, how's it going to be enforced? How is it going to be administered? And, you know, it, we can put these regulations on the books, but, you know, is it really going to be effective? So those were really the four themes that kind of ran through those comments. The, as far as the traffic study, there were, as I, I already summarized the first point, which is that we studied a total of 16 intersections. And, and really, the, the most important thing to remember about the traffic study is that we, they analyzed the existing conditions, which would be, which would account for any of the warehouses that were built and occupied. Those trips are already on the roads, they're already passing through a lot of those intersections. So they were accounted with traffic counts that were gathered through meters and cameras and other techniques. But then the, the idea was, while looking into the future, what additional impacts will be generated by the applications that were already approved and under construction? Those trips are not on the roads yet, but we had the, the information from all of those site plan applications that the township provided our team. So the, they were able to generate the trip estimates from each of those applications and added that in to the, the daily traffic and into those intersections, in addition to making the normal assumptions that I'm sure you've always heard, you've heard about from traffic experts at your meetings, as far as the anticipated sort of ambient growth, the growth that's going to be taking place around the area no matter what. So the, those trips were added, and then to give a worst-case scenario, we actually included the trips that, from the applications that were in the pipeline that were not acted upon because they, they involved specific sites in that business and industrial zone. So if they were all approved based on the, the, the applications that had been submitted, how much additional traffic would we, would the township be looking at in kind of that last, sort of almost a full build-out mode? And that's what the, that's what went into the traffic study, which is in the appendix or in the appendices of the draft report that you were providing. And, and suffice it to say that there were probably, I would say, off the top, about maybe a half a dozen intersections where there, if the, if there wasn't a, a failing turning movement based on today's traffic, there would be under the other two scenarios. And generally, there, there wasn't much difference between the, the partial build-out, which would have been the applications that had been approved that yet not have, not yet have been built, and the full build-out, which would have been all of the sites assumably being improved with warehouses. The only difference really was that the, the waiting time just got worse. So there's clearly intersection issues that are, that are going to get worse as the, as these sites develop. And that was the main, the main purpose of that, that traffic study was to give us that kind of information, and, and there are recommendations as part of that traffic study as to some things that can be done to mitigate some of those issues over time, despite what happens with the land use applications. And so what that got us into, what do we do about land use? We know we have these applications that have already been approved, that are likely to be built. We are going to have some amount of applications that are already in the pipeline that will, some, some may be approved, some may be denied. That's to be determined, but we know there's going to, there's going to be additional development on those parcels. And then we have the, a reasonable expectation that this trend, even, even on sites that are already developed now with some, some other type of development, that it's, it potentially could continue and likely will continue. And I think that's, what's significant is that a number of the sites of those 37 were on, were properties that had been previously developed with some other type of use, like an office building or hotel. And of, of course, you as board members are, are much more familiar with the details of the ones that have already come through the board, but certainly there's, there's a, the potential for that to continue. So the, the, really the objective is, how do we get our arms around this and try to get in front of it so that we can minimize the, the, any additional future impacts on the road network, but especially control the heavy truck traffic, which is what most folks are worried about and, and dealing with now and are, are afraid of in terms of additional traffic in the future. One of the things that, that came up in, in our interactions with the steering committee and with, with the public is, surely would not be any surprise to a group of experienced board members like yourselves, but it's kind of like, well, why are we doing this study? We've already prohibited all, all additional warehouses, so why, why should we make any changes? And I think the, the typical answer that we would, would give, which would, would be the, the frank answer is that this idea of prohibiting all of, all types of warehouses, no matter what they are, is, is probably, and almost definitely not legally sustainable. And that we needed to be able to, and, and also what it does is it kind of, it kind of paints the entire land use sector with the same brush, when in, in fact, in reality, there are many types of warehouse-type uses that have a, a fairly benign impact on traffic, especially traditional storage warehouses, which is what most zoning ordinances were, were anticipating before all of this e-commerce kind of differentiated these warehouses into so many different types. Some of them, which have extraordinary impacts, a large trip generation factors, things like parcel hubs and fulfillment centers, for example, the so-called last mile facilities, where they, the goods are taken off of larger trucks and put into vans and smaller vehicles to, to go out into the, for final delivery, and those generate a tremendous amount of trips. And there are, but there are a number of types in between that are, that are comparable, if not less impactful than other permitted uses in the business industrial zone. So how do we, how do we differentiate between them? How do we try to parse, parse them out so that we're keeping out the ones that would have the biggest impact and only permitting those that would have the lesser impact? And as, if we're going to allow those, those types of uses, how do we keep them away from residential areas? So that's really how we started out with the land use part of this. And this slide that I've got up here kind of, kind of points out those points that I, that I just made, really what was, what would be the framework that we would use? And that leads us to this idea of not trying to, and this, this came out of, of really a exchange of ideas between us as consultants and your, and your staff, which is really on the front line, dealing with these sites and these applications on a daily basis, trying to, to figure out a way how they can use a framework which would be understandable, that would be predictable for them and for potential property owners and applicants. And the traditional approach of trying to zone out or try to get into the various types of warehouses, which is what a lot of other towns have tried to do, we, it really got to a point where it would have been really difficult to be able to distinguish these warehouses, and as the board knows, you get, most of your applications are on spec. So they have a, a site, they get a, they figure out what their, their building coverage and their floor area ratio is, they show you a, you know, a, a square or rectangle on the property with parking, and that's pretty much all they, all they know because they don't know who their end user is going to be. So what we tried to do with this approach is differentiate between low, medium, and high intensity uses, and this gives you these, these three different categories, give, establish square footage maximums, and they also are based on loading docks, the, the number of loading docks per thousand square feet of warehouse space or floor space. And they're, they're based on the, the, the Institute of Traffic Engineers' data on trip generation. So even though the, you don't get from these numbers, you don't get a, a relationship or a link to traffic impacts, these numbers are, are, are related and connected to the trip information, the traffic information for different types of warehouses. And that's where the, to be honest, the, the load intensity light industrial, the 150,000 square feet or less means that they are, their, their numbers of, of truck trips are less. And then the other controlling factor is the loading dock per, per thousand square feet. In this case, if we're low, it's one loading dock per 10,000 square feet. And just to, to kind of explain that a little better, if anything less than 10,000 square feet would mean more loading docks. It's kind, it's kind of counterintuitive. So you wanted to have, you want to make sure you don't have any more than one loading dock per 10,000 square feet. If you end up with one loading dock per 20,000 square feet, that's fine, but anything less than, than 10,000 square feet means too many loading docks, too many trucks. So the, the more loading docks that are, that are within the facility, the more truck trips they potentially could generate. And we also got into high dock versus low dock. The reason for that is that some of these types of warehouses that, if you see a warehouse that has a large number of low dock type facilities, that means they're, 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 they're talking about smaller vans. The reason for that is that some of these types of warehouses, if you see a warehouse that has a large number of low dock-type facilities, that means they're talking about smaller vans, that if they don't have the high dock where the tractor-trailer truck backs up and the dock has to be about 48 inches off the ground for it to line up with the bed of the truck, you're talking about smaller vehicles. And that's when you have to get concerned about it turning into a high-trip-generation-type use. So that's why we use the high dock and low dock controlling factors. And then with medium intensity, what we determined was that anything over 400,000 square feet would have an undesirable impact in terms of trip generation. So we capped it basically at 400,000 square feet. And then anything over 400,000 square feet, and you have a number of existing facilities that are considerably more than 400,000 square feet, those would not be permitted at all. They would be considered high-intensity uses. And then to go along with that, we wanted to, as we said before, push the medium-intensity uses, the bigger warehouses or the ones with the more loading docks closer to I-287. And so we looked at what's a reasonable proximity that we could use as a standard, and we agreed on one mile. There are some factors in the literature which suggest that it could be as much as two miles from an interchange with an interstate highway or a major arterial. However, in Franklin's case, when we measured a one-mile, basically a road mile, so driving distance between a parcel and one of the two interchanges that are proximate to the business and industrial zone, we found that we were creeping down close to residential areas. So one mile keeps the medium-intensity uses away from the residential areas and closer to those interchanges with I-287. And we feel that that's, because it's specific to Franklin Township and it's based on measuring road miles, we feel it's a defensible standard. And then there are a couple of additional kind of standards that we wanted to add. And one of the things that I didn't mention in the slide prior to that is, and I'll just scroll back, only the low, as I mentioned, the high-intensity light industrial uses would not be permitted. By the way, that would mean not just warehouses, but any light industrial use that would meet these characteristics, even a manufacturing facility, wouldn't matter, but the square footages and loading docks would apply. The low intensity and medium intensity, where we would be suggesting that they would be permitted, would only be as conditional uses in the business and industrial zone. And the conditions are what we'll get into as we move along this evening, and those are intended to really protect quality of life for the surrounding areas. So getting down into those conditions, in the master plan reexamine, what we're recommending for a low-intensity light industrial use for conditional use standards, so all of these, as the board knows, these conditional use standards would all have to be met in order for any particular application to be eligible or to qualify for the planning board to grant a conditional use permit and in conjunction with site plan approval, which would be associated with that. And we'll kind of walk through this one at a time because I think they're all really important. The first one is that on any parcel, and in Mark's ordinance, he goes through all the different schedules for permitted uses for high bulk and other bulk requirements for the business and industrial zone. But for any parcel, the total floor area would be limited to a maximum of 0.362. And you might ask, well, where did that number come from? Well, basically, what that translates to generally is if you remember the 150,000-square-foot maximum for low-intensity warehouse, for example, you would need a parcel of almost 10 acres for 150,000 square feet. For the 400,000 square feet, so if you kind of, easy math, you double that to a 300,000-square-feet facility, which would have to be within a mile of an interchange with I-287, because that would be in a medium-intensity category, you would need almost 20 acres for that amount of square feet. So for 400,000 square feet, you're now close to 15 to 20 acres and up. So the bigger the warehouse, the bigger the parcel, and as you saw on that map, the number of parcels that are available that are of that size are shrinking rapidly. And then the second part, the second conditional use standard, is that they have to have direct access on a minor collector or higher-order street via an interior access road or a non-residential street. So the idea is get them on a minor, at the minimum, a minor collector. And for example, most of the minor collectors in the business industrial zone are county roads. So you're talking about roads that run through from one part of town to another. They're minor and major collectors or higher. And part of the objective there is to keep the trucks off of residential streets as they're making their way from their site in question to I-287. The third one is no frontage is permitted on an scenic roadway. And I should back up a step and say that these order streets, minor collectors, major collectors, and so on, are identified and mapped in your circulation plan element. So they're known. So that when you as a board, if you're getting an application and you're applying these conditions, that this should be self-evident as to whether the site complies with that condition. Either there's an access road that connects to a minor or a major collector, or there's a direct access to one without passing along a residential street to get there. So that's something that's definable, and it's something that would be reviewed by your board professionals as part of that application review to make sure it complies. And then same thing, in like manner, your scenic roadways are also identified in the master plan. So for example, Western Canal Road, at least in part, if not the entire length, is identified as a scenic roadway. So that limits the number of sites in terms of where they can be located as well. The fourth standard is that a minimum vegetated buffer is required per Schedule 6, except, and this is a condition, not a bulk standard, that the minimum buffer width shall be 100 feet along a residential zone boundary. So that presumably would only happen, in the majority of cases, in a low-intensity area. So as we said before, you're pushing the medium-intensity uses within a mile of Interstate 295. That leaves the southern portion of the business and industrial zone for the lower-intensity uses, and that's where you're more likely to come up with a site that might come up against a residential zone boundary. So there's actually, and you'll see likewise in number five, there's an additional standard for building setbacks as well. So you're keeping buildings a minimum of 200 feet away from that residential zone boundary line, and half of that, at least 100 feet of that, has to be a vegetated buffer. So you're providing both distance and a double buffer in those situations. And then the last two that are suggested here on the slide really just have to do with visual impact, and that's when they are preparing the site plan and they are typically, well, some warehouses have loading facilities on both sides, most have loading facilities along at least one side. Those loading and service areas cannot, they have to be faced away from public streets and away from residential zone boundary lines. So that gives you a flavor for the types of conditions that are being recommended. The main difference between the two, the low and the medium, as you can see in the first item under medium intensity, is that the site and the use must be located within one mile of an interchange with Interstate 287, measured along a truck route identified in the master plan circulation model. So whether that truck route ever gets defined or not is a question for, probably for the future or for another day. But the township has provided a map, which I'll show you in a moment, where that boundary line is actually shown. And this is it. If you can see the blue line, and I'll try, I don't know if you'll be able to see my mouse pointer or not, but within this business industrial zone, which is a very large portion of the township, the two interchanges with I-287, Western Canal Road and Eastern Avenue, Davidson Avenue, have that one-mile boundary around them, is a one-mile, as we mentioned before, a one-road mile distance. So you can see that how much the area is condensed around those interchanges. The whole rest of the business industrial zone would only be, the only use that would be allowable would be a low-intensity use as a conditional use in those areas. And just as a note, those numbers that you see in red are the numbers corresponding to a spreadsheet that Mark has of all the different warehouse applications and where they're located. So you can see the number of applications that are within that blue boundary and the number of applications that are outside that blue boundary already. And I think one of the things that's important for the board to point out to the board is that because a lot of these applications were speculative, that means that as these developers try to look for tenants, when they come in for their zoning permit for their tenant, once this ordinance that's based on this master plan reexamine is in place, the township, your staff, will have more definitive standards to apply to them. So if they got an approval for a spec warehouse, and they come back with the number of loading doors that are higher than the ordinance permits or higher than what they were approved for, if they showed the number of loading doors, then you've got basically a second bite at the apple, which is important. And that's one of the reasons why the staff was really concerned about being comfortable that they could work with these regulations and apply them. It's not just the applications that you haven't seen yet that haven't been submitted and wouldn't be able to be submitted until these standards are put in place because right now, all warehouses are prohibited. It's the applications that you have seen but that were intentionally vague because the developer wasn't sure what the end type of warehouses would be. And I think the other point that's important to make is that in this process, that from what we were, the best we were able to determine, the township doesn't yet have one of the types of warehouses that would be the most impactful on the road network, and that would be a use such as a parcel hub or a fulfillment center. And so by, and I think what we're suggesting is that those two specific types of warehouses would be called out in the ordinance as prohibited, so that effectively you've at least have a defense against that. Of the applications that you have and the ones that you're likely to get in the future, what this will do is minimize the size of the warehouses because that has a correlation to the amount of truck trips that would be generated. So there's a logic to the standards that is supported by the data, especially the traffic study that underpins this land use analysis. And then the other thing, note I would make, is that Mark has told me that through the township's GIS technicians, they've been able to measure this one-mile boundary with a lot more specificity. So they actually have GIS data now supporting that one-road mile distance from the interchanges. So that's really to guard against applicants trying to get crafty with what side of that line their site might be on. It's very specific in your GIS system, which is a really effective tool for the township to have. And I believe that that's the last slide I have. So I think at this point, I'll turn it back over to Mark, and we can start, perhaps answer questions and start a discussion.
Yes, a really, question for Mike. Do you want to have questions of Dave now, or do you want me to go through the ordinance?
No, let's stop and let the board ask questions. Dave, I actually have a few and would start us off. So Dave, I know you can't see me, as Mike, we're senior chairman. So I really have three questions. The first is, in your experience, if you have a lot of failing intersections, a rated level of Service F or on their way to it, have you ever seen that sort of dissuade applications or applicants from coming in? They obviously always have a traffic expert to some degree or another. I'm just wondering if an application would be self-limiting because somebody says, oh, you know, there's 16 other warehouses and I'm 17, can I get on the road? So have you ever seen that?
Well, typically, I guess the short answer would be no, not in that context, because as I'm sure your board attorney has told you many times, that you can only deal with the application that's in front of you, and the traffic study that the applicant's going to do is going to be based on whatever intersection their trip distribution pattern shows those trips going to. And whereas the traffic study that Brightview did was really a zone-wide study. So applicants only really responsible for the impact of their trips. So if the, and I know that what we've suggested is that some of these intersections are on their way, if they're not already failing, they're on their way to failing. But there's going to be a difference between our analysis and the traffic study that the applicant professional does. They're only going to, they're going to have to pay for whatever, if their trips generate an impact that requires an improvement to the intersection in question, and it's purely their application's impact, then they'll have to pay for that traffic improvement. And sometimes it's a signal, what we've determined is that many of these intersections are already signaled, but there are signal improvements that could be done to them to improve their performance. So that'll have to be analyzed on a case-by-case basis. I think the one thing that the steering committee appreciated about the manner in which the township designed this study, having both traffic and land use components, is that the traffic study is now an appendancy of the master plan update. So at some point in time in the future, when you adopt this reexamine and master plan update, the traffic study is going to be on the record as a part of the appendancy. So you will have a greater knowledge base upon which to ask some of these questions to future applicants, but ultimately, they're going to come back and say that they're only responsible for improving an intersection if they're directly responsible for causing that. And I think the trick's going to be, especially if it's a left turn, which is really where all the failing movements are, what can be done to cover their margin of impact between what's there now and what they would cause? Most of the time, you're going to hear traffic consultants say, well, it's a B now, it'll be a C with our traffic, but it still operates at a satisfactory level. What we've shown is that there's a point where it's either already at F or it's going to be at F, and I think that just, it frames your discussion with that applicant maybe a little differently. But ultimately, they can only pay for what their part of it is.
No, I get that. And I think the more data we have, and to your point, if this traffic study is going to be incorporated as part of the master study is going to be incorporated as part of the master plan, it gives us another line of defense. And certainly, the board in the past has not been shy about banning turning movements in certain directions where we don't like them. So that's another control. My next two and last two questions really kind of go to the master plan amendment. So you mentioned spec warehouses, which almost all, if not all, are the ones that this board has approved, some maybe the zoning board has approved, are spec. I have heard, and I think it might be Piscataway, but I'm not 100% just certain, but I know I've heard, that there have been towns that have banned spec warehouses. If you come in for a warehouse application, you know, you have to have a use, not necessarily a tenant, but you can't say, oh, you know, it could be, you know, any one of the flavors, right, that you pointed out. And I was wondering if that's a direction the board can go in terms of really, you know, I don't, I mean, I think your definitions give us more specificity when it comes to the applications that come in that they're coming for this. But, you know, what do you think about specifically calling out spec warehouses? Now, I have no idea how defensible that is legally. I did hear it, I believe from an attorney who represents Piscataway, I'm not, I'm not certain where I heard it, but I know I heard it, that they have banned spec warehouses. And so I just want to know what you think about that as a possible strategy.
Yeah, I heard, I heard about that during our steering committee and community meetings. And I would say that basically what Piscataway has done is maybe a little bit, it's on a different order from what Franklin has done. When Franklin banned all warehouses.
Right.
There, there was a lot of litigation that came out of that. And I suspect with, by banning spec warehouses, that Piscataway's going to get some measure of litigation as well. Because they, you know, you get into those, those two terms that your board attorney has, has probably mentioned to you many, many, many times, arbitrary and capricious. And really, only a court of law can determine whether, what Piscataway did was arbitrary and capricious or not, or at least arbitrary, in that they've banned spec warehouses, you know, and they're forcing applicants to be more specific. Now, I certainly understand the rationale behind it, but I would say it's probably a, it's probably debatable from a legal standpoint as to whether that is defensible ultimately. But I can tell you that I have not run into it in my experience in other towns.
Mike, can I provide a little bit of input? Because I was asked this question before too. I don't know, I like the approach that's in this report better. I think it gives us more control over the type. You know, if you're, if you're leaving it to spec, you're not saying what type you want and what type you don't want. You're still then leaving it on to a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
You know, here, I think in this approach, we're saying, we're putting limits on the size, we're putting limits on the ratio of the high and low docks. We're, and then also, as again to the ordinance, we're basically saying no fulfillment centers, no postal hubs. We're, we're, we're setting the standards and putting it out there to the development community. We will, we will accept this and not accept that.
Right.
I think that's just more direct, it's, I think it's more direct and gives us better control.
No, I agree.
Almost kicks it down the road by saying no spec.
And Bob LeCort just told me it wasn't Piscataway, it was Hillsborough. Maybe Hillsborough didn't have this type of specific language in their ordinance, and so decided to kind of take a, take a sledgehammer to it and say, no, no spec warehouses. I mean, I don't know, I'm not an attorney, but if I were attorney for a township, I'd say it's more arbitrary and capricious that you come in and tell me you're building anything you want than me telling you that, you know, please, please come in and define what you're building. But that's, that's an argument for another day. But I agree with you, and it's probably more legally defensible. I don't know how, I'm just throwing that out there for the board's consideration, because everything comes in as spec, you never know what you're going to get. You know what you're not going to get. I mean, you know what, you're not going to get a fulfillment center, right, when it's a 75,000 square foot warehouse. But you still don't know exactly what you're going to get. Last question I have for Dave is, does the master plan language actively encourage redevelopment of parcels with antiquated or inactive uses? And obviously, I probably don't need to describe what I'm talking about in terms of the area around World's Fair, Atrium and there, where a few have come in, a few are coming in and knocking down extant uses that are no longer active. But do we actively encourage that kind of development where we're not breaking new ground?
The short answer, Mr. Chairman, is that we don't have specific language in the draft that specifically encourages redevelopment versus development. I think the approach is really a bit more about regulating the intensity of use with the understanding that it, there's a fairly high probability that future sites will be previously developed parcels, because there's really just very few undeveloped parcels left. And we did kind of come to that realization when we kind of analyzed the maps that I showed you earlier, and realized that we tried to find other vacant parcels that weren't already spoken for, and it seems like every single one is, is at least in the, in the offing for, like, if somebody's interested in it for this type of use. So we didn't specifically call it out and say we, that the master plan recommends preference for previously developed sites. But I suspect that, you know, again, with this, this type of approach, it really wouldn't matter if it was previously developed or undeveloped, it's still going to have to fit the categories.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I'll let the rest of the board ask any questions they want. And I just wanted, Dave, to thank you for, for everything, everything you've done in terms of this engagement with the township. I appreciate that we're seeing the tip of the iceberg, that there is a very large Titanic-sized iceberg beneath all of this, and a lot of work that you and the staff have done. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody else on the board with questions? Ted.
I have actually quite a, a bunch of comments on the ordinance, but for really a question, I looked, looking at the tables about the existing or under construction warehouses and comparing them with the proposed standards for defining light intensity and medium intensity use. And I noticed that, for instance, there's only one warehouse there that meets the standard for loading, loading docks per, really per 10,000 square feet, the Baldwin's little warehouse on Western Canal Road. And similarly, among the medium intensity, well, there are a lot of existing warehouses that meet the overall size requirements and the proximity to I-287, but they are tripped up by this loading docks per 10,000 square feet requirement, that they don't meet that. So practically, all existing warehouses fail to meet this particular, or fail to meet at what would otherwise be the level they would be described by the standard for number of loading docks for the size of the property. And I just sort of wondered, first of all, are those, how did those 5,000 and 10,000 numbers get picked? Is there anything particularly, particular evidence behind them? Because they don't seem to fit the existing warehouses. And therefore, could some enterprising attorney attack the whole ordinance on the basis that these standards, which the existing warehouses don't meet, are therefore arbitrary and capricious?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great question, Mr. Chase. I think that there was a, the original numbers for the square footage per loading dock come from the Institute of Transportation Engineers' study on high-cube warehouses and all that. There's a variety of different types of those kind of warehouses, that where they really kind of broke it down into heavy truck traffic, regular traffic, total traffic, et cetera. And the, the initial numbers that I came up with that were based on that data, then I, Mark chested it against that, in that table of all the existing applications. Because with the, we were really, the steering committee and both us as consultants and the, and the township professionals were very concerned about how these standards would, you know, would stack up with the existing applications that have already come through. And we adjusted those numbers, in fact, we adjusted them, I guess you could say, upward in terms of the majority of warehouses that fell in that, that warehouse ratio, I'm sorry, the loading dock ratio was a little bit higher in terms, in terms of greater numbers of loading docks than what the initial IT numbers were projecting for. For example, transload-type facilities, which are, have a lower traffic impact. And then, and then standard warehouses, which the data comes from, I guess it's the IT Land Use Group 150, which is basically a standard warehouse. So we looked at all of those numbers, and then we adjusted them, to some extent, to allow addition, you know, more loading docks than would have ordinarily been the case to, to match up against what Mark was seeing when he was looking at the square footages and loading dock ratios of the existing applications. Now, part of that answer comes from the fact that some of these warehouses would not meet the medium intensity criteria, because they're, they're more than a mile away from Interstate But what we, but, yeah. And I, but I think overall, in Mark's, in Mark's analysis of all the different applications, he summarized it by saying, about a third would, would be able to meet the conditions, about a third would be able to meet them if they made some changes to their applications, and about a third would not be allowed, you know, would not meet the conditions and would not be permitted under the, under these proposed standards. So it's kind of a one-third, one-third, one-third distribution. And so what you would anticipate is that if there's an application that's currently not approved, and they're, they're looking at these standards, if they have an opportunity to modify their application so that they do conform, they'll have an opportunity to do that. And that doesn't seem to be, at least not that we've heard yet, that does not seem to be a problem as far as that, that result. So I think the, the, it's kind of a long-winded answer to your question, but really, it's, it all kind of drills back down to the Institute of Transportation Engineers' data on various types of high-cube warehouses that relate to the number of loading doors, both high, high doors and low doors, and making an adjustment to account for what the township has experienced in terms of these applications that show the number of doors, show the square footage. Some of them may have to make adjustments if they're going to be able to comply.
Yeah, I'll just, just add one more thing, which is, the reason why that analysis was done frankly came from the steering committee, because the steering, you know, we were talking about these different concepts, and they wanted to understand, well, how does this relate to these different warehouse applications that we've seen? So that's, you know, so that's why that analysis was done. And then Dave described that again, basically the one-third, the one-third, and then there was that middle third where, you know, as Dave said, if they made some modifications. So there might be, I'll make this up, there might have been one that was 165,000 square feet. Well, if they lopped off 15,000 square feet, then they would comply. Or maybe they had a few extra loading docks. They'd knock off five more loading docks, then they would comply. And that was generally where that middle third, and we kind of thought that that was generally acceptable, generally. You know, if we found that all of them were red, all of them, not a single of those warehouses were permitted, well, that'd be, that probably wouldn't be very good, in order to be too strict. And if all of them were permitted, then we're not addressing the concerns that have been raised. So that's all I wanted to add.
But in that vein, Mark, and I was just telling this to Peter, everybody realizes that zones and zoning standards change over time. And so, I mean, as long as you're tailoring it in a defensible way, yeah, I mean, so, I mean, the example I gave Peter was ROL, right? Nobody wanted Atrium South, a few people on this board will remember that. And the Davidson Avenue extension, which would have run through what is now Somerset Run. So that whole overlay, was an overlay zone done for Senior Citizen Village, right? So, and everybody liked that at the time, because, you know, it was necessary, it was needed, the population was aging, and didn't put any kids in the school. So it was great, right? So, so these things change over time. And I think that as long, I mean, if you have a bunch of ware, and so nobody came in and said, oh, you know, I'm an office developer, and I have no place to put an office, you know, there were plenty of places to put an office in Franklin. So there's plenty of places to put warehouses, even based on this. It's just the type that we want. And I think that's probably eminently defensible. Any?
Yeah. The other thing I'll add is that we do give a, provide an explanation in the, in the planning document, in the reexam master plan update, as to where those numbers, you know, what was the basis for those numbers. So that there's, it's not a number, we just came out of, you know, we just sort of came up with something off the top of our head. It was based on institutional data.
Okay.
Anybody else have any, any question? Ted, if you want to hold your ordinance questions to when Mark goes over the ordinance part, if you want to take the, anything that you have that, now that you, tailored to the master plan. And the one you just asked was tailored to that, so that's fine.
Yeah, the one other comment that I have, and it's really about presentation, the, and it applies to both the reexamination report and the ordinance, and both refer to limits as loading docks per 5,000 or per 10,000 square feet. But the numbers that are in the tables, under the heading of loading docks, loading dock to area ratio, are actually square feet per loading dock. And this is extremely confusing.
He's, he's, he's my assistant. That was not me drinking out of my water cup. I forgot he was here.
He was typing, Mark.
You were able to see him. Now, he's a, he's a white shepherd, he's a pretty big guy. Sorry about that. Should have turned my, should have turned my mic off.
Well, if I continue and take, for instance, the Onyx proposal, and I'm not picking that because it's controversial, but because it proposes 10 loading docks, which makes the math easy to explain, 10 loading docks for 91,309 square feet. The number in the next column of the table is 9.131. And this is obviously square feet, or rather, thousands of square feet per loading dock, the inverse of the label at the top of the column. Now, there are some, I thought about this a good deal, and the actual number for loading docks per square foot would be 0.0001095, or if stated as docks per thousand square feet, 0.1095. And you probably didn't want to state such small numbers in the requirements. Stating the ratio as square feet per loading dock would yield a more comprehensible number, say 9131 square feet per dock, or 91, 9.1309, thousands of square feet per dock. But this has the problem that your limit is now problem that your limit is now a lower limit. You want a number greater than 10,000 of square feet per dock for a complying building for light use. I'm not sure which is the best way of stating the desired number, but at least make the column heading accurately describe the numbers in the column. But it then does have a bearing on just how do we want to state the requirements.
Understood. Yeah. I would say in the reexam report, which is, you know, a broader document, obviously, than the ordinance, we have footnotes explaining the ratio, because you're absolutely right. It almost, is almost counterintuitive, because you say you don't want the ratio to exceed 1/10,000, for example, which makes it sound like you want it to be less than 10,000 when it's the opposite. So we did explain that in the reexam report. It's probably harder to do in an ordinance because it's, you know, it's usually in a schedule or a table or whatever, so.
Yeah. I don't know if you could use language as the greater or the lesser of whatever, but, you know, something like that. I have to give credit to Ted, though. He's the one person on this board, I can state it with a fact, who would pick up that level of detail. And that's why I trust that everybody, everybody has their specialties. And Charles?
Yeah. Thank you, Dave. I was on the committee, and I think you and your team did a fantastic job. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
I have a question, you know, looking at this now with fresh eyes in terms of how we define intensity. Two ways we're looking at it, one being square footage, the other being the ratio of loading docks. One of the big concerns from the public, however, has been hours of operation. Hours of operation could very well be listed as an intensity factor along with those other three. That would help account for, even though you may have less loading docks, if you're working around the clock, you can generate more traffic. So I think it's something that perhaps has been overlooked. I don't know if that's a conditional use or what, but just something to consider.
No, yeah, I appreciate that. There was, during the, I believe it was the steering committee, I'm sorry, the community meeting, probably the first one, there was some concern about the fact that many of these operations do a lot of their, their back and forths with trucks at night, because it's easier for them to get in and out because there's less traffic on the roads. And the question really came back in terms of, you know, maybe there's less traffic on the roads, but we still have to hear the trucks, we have to experience them, you know, driving through our neighborhoods, et cetera. And so, it's that we, I guess the short answer is we didn't get into the hours of operation because we were trying to measure intensity. But typically, these types of uses do operate on a, you know, a 24/7 clock, because some of the logistics that they use are relying on the trucks getting in and out when there's, when there's really very little impediment on the road in terms of other traffic.
Yeah, but the leverage we have at this point now is to somehow mitigate that risk, right? Because there's a strong correlation between the hours of operation, the impact of noise, the impact on the environment, so on and so forth. So this is the opportune time to, you know, consider that as a factor now, as opposed to much later.
Point taken. Thanks.
Yeah, I agree with Charles in the sense that if we can put that in the master plan or in the ordinance or a little bit of both, that helps the board. I mean, the planning board does have discretion, right? If you, let's just say, for example, that a warehouse were to abut a residential use, then, and I'm not going to cite any specific examples, passed or pending. But if it were, then that is a risk that the developer now accepts. And what I would say to that developer is, okay, you know, 10, 11 o'clock, you're done. You know, that's, that's when your security lights go on. No lights, no camera, no action, you know, no trucks can go in. Those are your hours of operation. Don't like it, you know, hit the road. I think the board has that discretion, for sure. But, to your point, Charles, I think that if we can codify it in some way, that, like, for example, you do have things in this that talk about enhanced buffering of residential uses and things, should also be that kind of thing as well.
Yeah, my thought would be that we have to look into it, whether it's a land use ordinance thing or if it's a separate ordinance. So if it's a separate ordinance, it could be in the form of a recommendation that's in the master plan. I think we also want to think of the pros and cons. So as Dave just mentioned, you know, the businesses do like to have a 24-hour, you know, business cycle. And part of that, some of that is not always bad, in that if they, if it's a warehouse that's miles from a residential and just off 287, isn't it maybe a good thing that they're operating, getting their trucks in and out when everybody, when people aren't on the roads during the day? You know, what are the real impacts? I would think the real impacts are if it's a warehouse that's next to a residential zone.
Yep.
So what's the best, exactly. So that's, so that's what I'm, so that's the type of thing where I say, let's look into it. You know, so we can look into that and see what, what might be the best way to do it, whether it's a land use ordinance or some other ordinance.
Yeah, but let's, let's not just look into it and not come back with a solution, right?
Well, this is, the purpose of this is a work session.
I know, I know. So we're working it out, we're working it out live.
It's for you to do exactly what you just did, which is bring up the concern. And I don't think we necessarily have an answer right now, but you're going to have another hearing. So.
So, yeah, I mean, here's my suggestion. I think we need to put it in the standards where you specify in the ordinance where it abuts a residential zone, you talk about enhanced buffering, you talk about various other site improvement standards. That's where probably this should go, where you, if you would butt a residential, if you abut a residential use, your hours are constrained. If you abut a residential use, your, your noise shall not be in greater than, you know, so many decibels at any one time. You know, there have to be reasonable restrictions. And if the developer knows this upfront, it's not arbitrary and capricious, and they can make the decision whether that site suits their use or not.
Peter, what do you, any reaction to that?
Well, before Peter reacts, the great thing is, since we're working this, Peter, is that we have the power of GIS to predetermine right now which of those property has a likelihood of being proximate to residential uses. So we can already identify the parcels.
Sure.
So it's not like we're going on a hunt here. We could easily do that in no time and just identify those parcels now.
Right, well then.
Yeah. Just want to make a quick comment. Chairman, we recently passed a noise ordinance that eliminated the decibel level measurement because it was very cumbersome to do by the offices. So we have some, some protection using that. Maybe we have to merge those standards into this. I'm not sure how you do that, but because the officer has the liberty to issue summons if, in his opinion, it is noisy.
Yeah, that addresses noise, but in terms of lighting and hours of operation, you want to address that. And RAM, if you can put it in both places, all the better. So, yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
That's okay. I'm not even sure what the question is anymore. No, certainly you can, you can have hour limitations, but the question is how you want to, how you want to codify that and what you want to consider. If you want to consider places where you abut residential zones or places where you abut residential uses, those are two different things, because, as you know, you can have a nonconforming residential use in a zone that doesn't permit it. And then do you want that property to be something that's going to drive your planning goals? You know, so those are things that Mark and Dave would need to take into consideration when trying to look at that and see what you have and what the impact of those hours of, you know, operation, really in, you know, places where you impact the residential uses would be.
Yeah, we believe in both Mark and Dave, like you said, to look into it. We just want to, you know, state the importance of it now.
Yeah, and the other issue, too, the other concern would be the applicability in terms of existing versus future warehouses, too. Because the way that zoning works, it's applicable in a way moving forward. So I don't know if we put it in the ordinance, if there's an existing warehouse operating 24/7, I don't think that would apply to them moving forward. I believe, I'd have to look at, I can see Peter kind of going like this, but I believe that.
That would be retroactive.
You're not going to be able to shut down their operations, essentially.
Right, right.
Well, we want to prevent the same mistakes going forward. And, you know, to that point, that warehouse on Veronica, I think it's LG, the one on the other side of the road, there's a house there. And they actually put up a sound wall and everything. It's the one that sold them the property. So that's a preexisting, nonconforming use, I do believe. And, you know, and it has to be, because it's a BI zone, you got a house there. So they did that because they didn't want to, like, I guess, sell their house, they want to sell the property. The warehouse was built, and there's a sound wall. I remember the application, because this is, can you put a sound wall all the way down Churchill? And they're like, no, it's really just for the house, blah, blah, blah. So anyway, I would say with a preexisting, you've got to go with the zone, right? So if it is like to you say, maybe probably can't enforce that. But at least what is an R in front of it that should.
Understood. Well, the question's going to be what you want, I'm sorry. Question's going to be what you want the master plan and your ordinance to say, what you want, what type of regulation you want. So the question is, what type of residential use do you want to try to protect with an hours of operation regulation? And that's something that I think Mark and Dave can look at and take into consideration the things that you guys have pointed out tonight.
Yeah, I mean, the simple answer is that where it would apply would be, I would think, it'd be for those properties that are joined residential zones.
Right.
It's more of some of the other things about where that goes and what the language is that would have to be worked out.
That's why we trust you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi.
Go ahead, Ted.
Well, I just wanted to comment that a noise ordinance, I think, would apply to existing warehouses in a way that a restriction in this ordinance would not apply to an existing warehouse.
And that's why I bring that up, because what is the most effective way to, you know, to address this issue?
If you can get somebody out there with a noise meter.
Yeah. And again, as the councilman said, there is a noise ordinance. I personally did, I was, I'm aware of it. I personally didn't work on it, so I don't know exactly what that says. That's, again, that's another thing we have to look at.
Any, Rebecca, go ahead, please.
It's more of just a procedural clarification for myself, but the, say we're able to amend or update the plan, do these standards then apply to applications pending? Or is it kind of like the previous ordinance where if you got in before, they don't apply?
So I'll grab that. So.
It's a great question.
Yeah, so what New Jersey has is the time of application rule. So if someone files a complete application, they're entitled to the zoning that exists at the time of their application.
God, I just wanted to make sure we were dealing with the same situation.
Yep, we are. So, you got it.
Yeah, that's been the case for quite some years, but I can remember, I think the League of Municipalities had a fit when the developers sneaked that in. Because before that, an application could come before the board and you could change the zoning, well, certainly after it was filed.
Yeah, no, I can understand why that might not be regarded as fair. But, and anyway, yeah. If there are no other questions for Dave, I think, Mark, do you want to go through the ordinance and its particulars?
Dave, could you unshare?
Sure.
We'll learn more about that. And you want to hit the highlights, Mark, you know, that you particularly would want to point out the board's understanding.
Sorry, I had a little mouse issue there. Okay.
All right, you know what, I can just do this. You won't be able to see it, Dave. Apologize. All right, so this is, this is the draft ordinance, just so the board understands what they're seeing here. What I highlighted in yellow are, is changes, new language and changes. So the first section, I'm not going to get into the details because Dave really gave you the overview. We want to define what those uses are in the ordinance. So this is the light, high intensity, low intensity, median intensity, light industry uses. And it's those same parameters that Dave outlined, and that's in the master plan. If you remember, Dave was talking about high loading dock and low loading dock, so we have definitions of those. Since we do mention fulfillment centers and postal hubs as being not permitted, we define those uses. And we also define warehouse, because that's used in the definition of these light industry uses. So we want to make it clear what a warehouse is.
I had the comment there that are warehouses a use under light industrial use, because the present ordinance excluded them from that.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. So basically what we're doing here, and this is one of the things that we were wrestling with, is sometimes it can be somewhat hard to differentiate between, there's a spectrum of warehousing to light manufacturing.
Yeah.
And light manufacturing is already defined in our ordinance. And what this basically does is it blends them together, you know, so they're collectively referred to as light industry. So the definition says warehouse or light manufacturing facility, and again, both of those terms are defined, and then it basically categorizes those based on their size and their loading dock ratios. Okay, so this next section, this is the use schedule. So this is the section of the ordinance that spells out the different zoning districts in the town and indicates what uses are permitted in each of those zones. So you'll see here with my cursor, it's indicating low intensity, light industry, and medium intensity, light industry as conditional uses. This accessory uses section, this is really just an editorial change based on the change in terminology. Again, we're referencing those light industry and, or light intensity and medium intensity uses. These, this is the section of the ordinance, this is, would be new section 11250. These are the conditional use standards that Dave went over in detail. It's pretty much verbatim, it's verbatim in ordinance formats, and the language might be a little different, but the substance is exactly the same that Dave presented for the light industry and the medium, or low intensity and the medium intensity uses. The one thing I'll point out is that, right on this first section here for the medium intensity, said use must be located within one road mile of an interchange with 287, and it references Attachment 32, which is in draft form, this drawing that you saw before, this could be more formalized with our GIS department based, you know, computerized mapping, so it's 100% accurate. This is pretty accurate. I did this map myself, but again, it'll be done with GIS, so it'll be, you know, really definitive. And again, the purpose is that everybody knows what one road mile is, and nobody can come up with some cute definition of what that might mean. We're going to tell everybody what that means. This next section is the buffering requirements. This is Schedule 6. All of this cross out, in doing this ordinance, I realized there's actually a section in our ordinance that conflicts and is actually, has a much lower, lesser buffering requirement of only 15 feet. So that's coming out. So we don't want that. And instead, it says, refer to the buffering requirements of the respective zone. So here, here we're talking about the BI zone. So if this is a development in BI zone, you go to that section of Schedule 6 that talks about the BI zone buffering requirements. So again, this is, again, the changes are highlighted in yellow. This paragraph here is really just clarifying, making it again more clear. A lot of this is based on our experience. So I think as we go through this, you'll probably recognize a lot of these things, things that we've dealt with on these applications. So this is making abundantly clear what cannot be in a buffer. This paragraph here is getting into the specifics of the quantity, how much, how, because we want to make sure that, you know, the density of the buffer, if you will. So we, not only do we want it to be 100 feet wide, we want it to be planted with trees of certain sizes and mixes and of a sizes and mixes and of a certain minimum quantity. This is talking about native plant, use of native plantings, use of drip irrigation systems, because we obviously want to make sure that that buffer lives. This section here, it seems like a small change, but this is saying, so we have an ordinance that says you have to have one tree for every 2,000 square feet of pavement. Number one, we're doubling that, so it's going to be one tree for every 1,000 square feet of pavement. So not only are we doubling it, we're also making it clear that that's exclusive of the buffering. So you can't just use all those plants you're going to put on the exterior, this is planting within the interior.
I had a quick comment on that.
Sure.
So you have a three-foot tree in those, can you make it a little taller? I think, you know, we have heard from other residents, the warehouses putting trees, very small bushes kind of instead of trees. Somewhere, there's a three-foot tree somewhere.
Well, that's shrubs. Shrubs are three feet, trees have to be six feet if they're evergreens, and the deciduous need to be two and a half inch calipers.
I've seen applications in which the applicant lists service berry species under trees, where members of the environmental commission said, those are bushes.
This is, again, a lot of this is making it clear, all land that's not covered by building sidewalks, et cetera, have to be landscaped. And this is talking about the use of nursery grown plant materials. And then lastly, this section talks about the buffer. The normal buffer in the BI zone is 50, so if it's a office building, some other type permitted use, it's 50. But if you're going to be a light industrial or medium, light intensity or medium intensity, that goes up to 100, and that's referring to those conditional use standards. These are the design standards. So at the planning board's suggestion a few years ago, we put in these design standards, and this is going to improve them in several ways, again, based on our experience with these applications. So this is the section here B, that's talked, where I talked about the increasing the amount of trees. This is, this C is talking about the location of loading docks. It also makes clear that not only we trying to protect residential properties, but there sometimes are uses that may be a little bit more sensitive that are permitted in our industrial zone, like hotels, schools, places of worship, childcare centers, those are permitted. And if they're located next to those uses, they should also take a little bit more care in screening those loading docks and service areas. Architectural elements, board members and the public have made comments, we had a standard in there, but we've increased it, made it more clear of what we want to see, a mixture of styles, textures, minimizing blank facades and walls, encouraging use of green walls and awnings and columns and things of that nature. Again, these are things that the planning board has commented on over the years as well as the zoning board.
I have a question about that. The sentence that you've taken out at the beginning of D referred specifically to the sides of the building facing adjoining roadways and more. So if you've taken that out, then it would seem that all of these requirements would apply to all sides of a building. And do we really care if two warehouses next to each other have two blank walls facing each the other warehouse? Might this be better limited to facing streets and facing residential zones?
It's a good point. Again, I took the sentence out in its entirety only because it, you know, the new language was, I think, more comprehensive. I think what I would suggest is, I know what you're saying, and I think perhaps language saying, I don't think there's any harm in encouraging good design on all four sides. Why not encourage it? But I think it should say, you know, essentially along the lines of, but particularly facing the streets and particularly facing residential properties. I think some language like that, I don't see any reason why we can't encourage it generally, though.
Exactly, because you don't know, just because you have a use, that's a permitted use in the zone, that might not be, you know, appropriate to have it have some architectural detail facing it, that use could change in the future and you would then subject them to that same blank wall. So, I mean, it's a good design goal, and frankly, if they're building the building, they should take it into consideration.
E is similar to what we discussed before about loading docks and service areas, same thing, mechanical equipment, should try to screen those if they're adjoining not only residences, but those other more sensitive uses. J is, speaks to minimizing conflicts between cars, trucks, bicyclists, and pedestrians, designing the interior circulation in a more sensitive way, having crosswalks, across driveways, et cetera. Again, the board has discussed these type issues on these applications, so we wanted to put it in there.
Could I comment on F, even though you're not making changes? I guess I'm going to suggest a change. Something that comes up when the environmental commission is discussing a site plan application is that there should be not only bicycle parking, which perhaps means a bicycle rack, but also what they call a facility for simple repairs of bicycles. I'm not a bicyclist, I don't know exactly what it's meant, I'm sure our vice chair does.
Bicycle repair station.
Yeah.
Very inexpensive.
So, I mean, we could put that in at this point.
Okay, all right, will do. So J, again, so that's talking about the interplay between driveways, walkways, and having safe pedestrian and bicycle passage through the site. Charles, do you have any comments on that? Because I know this is your.
No.
Did I word it right?
You did well, as always.
Okay. Traffic, applicant shop repair traffic control plan. So this is, we want to see on the site plan where your equipment storage areas are going to be, where you're going to put your stockpiles, hours of construction operations, you know, put that on the plan so not only the board can see it, but the board's engineer can review it and comment on it. Next comment is, or next design standard talks about truck routing, so we want them to tell us how they're going to route trucks, how they're going to inform, you know, the truck drivers, how to take the appropriate routes, are they going to put signage? Again, these are all things that we've discussed over the years. A gate management plan, so if they're going to have gates, you know, we want to know that, we want to make sure they incorporate that into their site plan, so they can add, we want to know how that's going to operate, and we want to make sure that there's going to be adequate queuing on site. N is really a very, kind of a similar standard, basically saying, you know, you have to design it so you don't have queuing out onto the roadway.
As with Amazon.
O talks about driveways, internal drive aisles and curb cuts have to be designed in a way that allow adequate widths and turning radii to allow tractor trailers to complete turning maneuvers while remaining within their designated travel lanes.
I have a small comment here, and I don't know the exact details, but I know that we've sometimes heard about two different sizes of tractor trailers, and I just don't remember the specific designations, but you might want to get the definitions and put in whichever one you want to be specific.
What I would, that's a good suggestion. What I would suggest is, I'd like to talk to our, Darren Mazie, our engineer.
Yeah.
And find out if, if he would like it to be in there specifically, or if he would prefer that it not, because then he would have the ability on a, based on that particular use, what turning, what type of truck they should be using and what turning radii they should be using.
Yeah.
I just don't, I don't know what his opinion would be, but I'll ask him.
Well, I know that we've had applications where there simply wasn't room for the turning radius that would accommodate the longest tractor trailer. Or it could be that when there were two loading docks facing each other, that there really wasn't room for the longest type to get into position perpendicular to the building. But yeah, discussing it with Darren would be the best point.
Okay, will do. P speaks about a number of different sustainability measures that are encouraged, use of green roofs, use of cool pavement, permeable pavement, use of green building design, green stormwater infrastructure, bio swales, cisterns, rain gardens, et cetera, encouraging those things in site plan applications.
The environmental commission will love this.
Q, so this gets to, again, some of the things we've already been discussing tonight. When an applicant is next to a residential zone, they have to have a noise impact study prepared by an appropriate professional, and that'll be required as part of their application. And then lastly, R, we want them to provide with their application a narrative statement demonstrating compliance with this. And, you know, this is recommended for two reasons. I mean, the one reason is, you know, it makes the application more complete for the board's review, but I think it also puts the applicant on notice that you need to answer these questions upfront. And I think it makes them pay attention to these standards upfront. And then you'll see later on in the ordinance, we actually put that as a checklist item on their development checklist, so it won't even be deemed complete. They won't be able to go before you unless they give us this narrative statement. The, this next section is the, these are the, what we call the bulk standards, so these are recommending some modifications to the building setbacks. This is just ordinary, this is not when it's next to a residential zone, this is just overall 25 feet side yard, 50 foot rear. I don't think this really has any practical real impact, because most applications end up complying with this anyway, just to get driveways around the site, but 10 is kind of a ridiculously low setback.
Well, I think it could reduce the size of warehouses.
It may, it may.
I think the B9 warehouse was really running up against these limitations.
Yeah, so it's, either way, these are 25 foot side setback, 50 foot rear is exceedingly reasonable, so we took the opportunity to modify that.
This includes driveway access around the building?
This is, this is just a setback for buildings.
Yeah.
So the buildings have to be 25 feet.
Yeah.
If that answers, and then the footnote, again, we just, we want to cross-reference, we want to make sure that somebody's making an application, but if you're next to a residential zone, if you're a low intensity or medium intensity use, look at those conditional use standards, because there are bigger setback requirements.
And, Mark, that is where I think you can refer to the hours of operation, lighting and such, not that Charles and I were referring to, because you're referring specifically to abutting residential uses in that section. So when you and Dave go back and look at this, that might be a place to put it.
Similar change here, this is really minor, but this is, again, that reference, this is the floor area ratio. Dave talked about the different floor area ratio under the conditional use standards, that's making sure that people are aware. The change to the parking, we didn't really feel the need to change the parking requirement, but we did put a clarification in there. Typically warehouses do have a small office component, as long as that office component is less than 10% of the overall square footage, they don't have to separately spell out an office requirement in a warehouse, because if it's only 5 or 10% of the warehouse, it's part of the overall, it's an accessory use to the overall warehouse.
Yeah, sometimes applicants say, will say, well, what if we subdivide this and we have four or five users, each one with an office?
I'd say come back.
Then the parking would go up. I don't think it'll happen, but it is, if it did happen, that would put the parking requirement up somewhat. But actually, our tendency has been for the warehouses to come in with more parking than we think is necessary.
I really, and I did this for two reasons. One is, frankly, this is the way that I've been interpreting it anyway. If it's only a, you know, 5% of the warehouse, 8%, I don't separately spell out the office. And I also know that this board doesn't necessarily want to encourage more parking than is necessary. So that's, you know, the two main reasons for that.
Mark, I do think, you know, selfishly, we want to encourage the use of their charging stations for the general public. I don't know, you know, they have better, higher graded EV charging stations at some of these facilities, but they're marked, you know, employees only, because it's private property. But if there could be a situation where there's a variance or an ask for that, that those parking spaces be open up to the public, that would be great.
Yeah.
That's a tough one, but you know.
It's liability, yeah. And, you know, but, I mean, maybe you're going to get to this market if so, I'll wait, but do you talk about banking spaces?
Well, that's already in the ordinance.
All right, cool.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, yes. This section here is real minor, again, this is the, talking about the 50 foot, currently, already you're not allowed to have parking within the front yard. Again, this is a clarification, because sometimes we get an applicant going, well, the drive aisle is not the parking lot, so that could be in the front yard. So I think, no, no portion of the parking lot, whether it's cars parking or the drive aisle for the parking lot can be in the 50 foot setback. That's, no portion of a parking area, that's the reason for that.
So, Mark, I have just a comment. Recently, there was a hearing at the state Capitol, the EMS personnel, I believe, they brought up a question or a concern that there are not enough signage in the warehouses in terms of exit, entrance, idling, and, you know, one-way, whatever. Is there something going to be in the ordinance to have all those signage, proper signage in the property?
Well, it depends on what the signage is. I mean, if it's, if it's, I heard you say idling, that's, that is already required. I believe there's some additional language regarding that. If it's about things like putting the building number and having exit signs and things like that, those are, those are building code issues.
Yeah, emergency entrance, you know, the fire prevention folks, firefighters.
Yeah, that typically is not something that you would have in a zoning ordinance, that's, that would be in the uniform construction code.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to bring up about anti-idling signs. I think we've regularly suggested from the environmental commission, every fourth, one at every fourth loading dock, plus one at the office and one at the entrance into the Inform them several times over not to leave their truck idling.
So that's something I'll look into, because the ordinance, it does address that, and then it mentions these, it cites the two state standards. Let me see what those state standards say. For example, if it might already be in there, every fourth, it might not. If it's not, then I would say, let's put it in. You know, if it's every fourth, you know, comply with this, but no less than one for every four loading docks, and what was the other? What was the other?
Well, just one at the office. If the driver goes into the office, he sees it, and one at the entrance to the property. And I think the, when we've brought this up in site plan review, applicants have generally been agreeable to.
Yeah.
Every fourth loading dock.
Yep. Okay.
Ensures that any position is within two slots of a sign.
I'll, we'll add that in, because again, a lot of the, as you see, the main theme with this is incorporating things that the board has been trying to encourage all along, but basically codifying it. And then lastly, this last change here, oops, not the last, this is the last one. This is, this is the change to the application checklist I had mentioned. This is, this is the change to the application checklist I had mentioned, where we require the narrative statement addressing compliance with the conditional use standards. I also threw a thing in there about if they are asking for a waiver, there's 62 different application things that you have to submit if you're making a site plan. And if you want a waiver, or if you're claiming that any one of them is not applicable, I'm recommending that they need to provide a narrative statement explaining that. So again, that's, so that's basically the ordinance. Again, as I said, this is substantively, it's what David presented, again, not, not only at the prior community meeting, what he presented to you a few minutes ago, it's in the master plan. This puts, you know, again, puts it in ordinance format and puts some more meat to it as you normally would in an ordinance. So that's all I have.
Steve Noddy, yes.
Anybody have any, any comments on what Mark has said or any questions they may have thought of for Dave since he's still online? And hopefully his dog is satiated. Mark, what's the cadence going forward? So we're going to have a hearing for the master plan, yes?
Yes.
And that will be roughly when, roughly?
I would say roughly, I would hope it would be by the end of April. We have to look at our board's schedule as far as your applications that you have. We may, if the board would, would want to discuss it, perhaps have a special meeting again.
Yeah, I mean, let's see what happens in terms of how April unfolds, but yeah, I mean, we could potentially think of, you know, the last Wednesday in April for like the work session, the master plan hearing. The only thing is, I am, my, well, I know Easter is like, what, 18th or something like that. I don't know if anybody's got plans or whatever, so let's just see how April unfolds. In my experience, there's a, you know, you have a bunch of applications and for some reason or another, then all of a sudden we, we're told it's canceled. So we can, instead of canceling it, we can always shoehorn a, a thing in there. And then the ordinance itself.
Well, the ordinance, the ordinance itself, you know, as you know, the, the planning board doesn't adopt.
Right.
The plan would be to put this in, you know, it would be, it would go with the, the master plan, I'm sorry, it would go, it would go to the council in the form of a recommendation.
Yeah.
What I would recommend is, again, the board has made a few comments today. We'll take a shot at putting some language that we hope satisfies your comments. You'll get that revised draft at the hearing.
Yep.
And we can talk about it at that point.
That sounds good.
Then it can go, again, that, then it can go to the council.
Yeah.
As your recommended ordinance to them, and then they'll, they take it from there in terms of introducing it and then having a hearing on the ordinance.
Yeah, sounds good. It's 9:23. I do want to open it up to the public, even though we're not required to because it's a work session, a hearing, but I figure it's probably good if there's any specific comments to hear them now so that they can be incorporated going forward, similar to what the planning board made. And, and we have roughly a half hour left in our meeting time to do that. And I really, if there's people who would like to say something, I'd like you to make it specific to what has been talked about tonight, not general, not, I saw an 18 wheeler push over a stop sign, I, I don't want a warehouse, I, I, you know, anything like that. Just specific comments either to the master plan or to the ordinance that you feel might, might make a difference. So with that, I'll move to open to the public.
Certainly.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Hey, please come up, state your name, address. I don't think you'll be sworn in unless you're presenting anything, so if it's just opinion, You might have to push a switch there.
I'll try to speak loudly.
No, we do, we need it for the record, the minutes.
You don't have an EV charger, Christine?
Yeah.
See if it works.
Good evening, Norman Roberts, Benjamin Street, Somerset. I have one personal comment, which I'll hold to the end, and some observations and questions on things that were not, I believe, touched upon tonight. First is traffic enforcement and whether or not the police in Somerset have the capability to enforce the continual flow of large vehicles that are flowing through the town. Just a specific instance.
Well, can, can you keep your comments to what was presented tonight in terms, this is not the purview of the planning board, and can you keep it to either the master plan, what was presented, the content there, the ordinance, the content there, personal anecdotes? We don't need, just like really specific to the, we really want to try to get the ordinance and the master plan comments in and not, not just anecdotes. Thanks.
All right, well, first, first question is, what, the, I have heard much about traffic. I don't hear anything about traffic enforcement by police. I do not hear anything as far as the traffic.
I'll try this again. We're not the police, we can't enforce it. It is something you can take to council, sheep is right there. And, and so, yeah, can you, again, not the planning board, I'm gonna, that's the second time, I'm not gonna do the third time.
So sir, and just to make it clear, sir, again, just so I understand what board you're in front of, you're in front of the planning board. Planning board has nothing to do with the police department. So if there's comments about the police department, as the chairman said, you may want to go to township council on that.
As far as the warehouses that we're discussing, what is, what is being done with regard to fire control on the warehouses that, as far as these regulations that are being drawn up? Mr. Rossini made reference to not having warehouses that are on spec as far as the contents of the warehouses and fires in the warehouses and toxic fumes that may be released by fires in the warehouse. How is that being addressed?
Construction code. I mean, the fire, the fire, John House, the fire official reviews every application, makes his recommendations, and that's how that's addressed.
Yeah, sometimes there are questions of hazardous materials and there are state designations of hazardous materials, and it may require some further specialization of the building if there are hazardous materials, but that should be covered more, as Mike says, by, by the state laws and by the fire prevention officer, John House.
Yeah, and I'll just clarify as well, again, just to piggyback, it, it's not a land, that's not a zoning issue. It's building code, so when the construct, when the, when the warehouse gets built, it has to be built in a certain way. And then on a continuous basis, twice a year, we have a whole department, the Department of Fire Prevention, that goes in all the different commercial facilities throughout the town twice a year to make sure, to observe what is in the building and to make sure they're complying in terms of their fire suppression, their exit signs, things of all of that nature. So there are controls in place in terms of the building code and fire prevention to make sure that those users are doing what they need to do.
All right, well, then the only personal comment is that when I look at this seal that says township of Franklin, I get the feeling that it's township warehouses, and it's just very disheartening.
Yeah, and I mean, like we said at the outset, it is state law, state planning law, that you can't, you have to allow for every type of use in your land use element. For example, we don't specifically call out certain types of, it used to be we never called out tattoo parlors or things like that, or adult film, adult stores, right? Because you, you call them out, but truthfully, you could, you could have them because they are a permitted use. And we don't ban them in the zone because we don't want to call attention and say, oh, you know, we banned them, so please come and sue us. But truthfully, you have to allow for every type of land use. And so, and even if you're a fully built out town, which, which we are not, you would still have to allow for that type of land use because maybe things would change in the future and, you know, you would have, like you have on Davidson and World's Fair, empty office buildings that you'd like to repurpose into a ratable use. But yeah, unfortunately, the ban was temporary to get the township to work through this. We are working through it as you see here tonight, and, and then we will be able to better prescribe where warehouses can and can't go. I think you'll be pleased with the end result. Unfortunately, I think everybody in this room and everybody sitting on this dais would say, you know, wish we had done this sooner, the cat's a dog, the house, the horse is out of barn, or whatever animal and structure you want to make an analogy to, but at the, at the end of the day, it is at least an attempt to control what's going forward.
Paul Willski, chairman of the Environmental Commission. What I want to get just a bit, we've been talking about the requirement for solar cell readiness, and we've been considering in the commission, can we lower the readiness from 100,000 square feet, maybe to 50,000 square feet? It still saves the people money and it helps the environment.
What's the state law? Isn't there a state statute on that?
The state requires it for all buildings of over, all warehouses of over 100,000 square feet. And I think it's in here somewhere, it just says that all these buildings should be solar ready. Look back.
Normally the developer says, well, I don't know who the tenant's going to be, what it's going to require.
Yeah.
But you do require some electrics. And the board's doing it.
Yeah, no, we, we always do, I can, I can say, I, I do, I know the board does, look at the Environmental Commission report, and, and like the ones we just had in back of Veronica, the 275K warehouses, I asked them specifically, are you, are you going to be solar ready? And because they're spec, right, they'll always say the tenant, it's up to the tenant, and that's fine. I mean, if you, if it's legally defensible to lower it to 50, to lower it to 10, I mean, I, I think I have solar panels on my roof, I'm pretty sure it's less than that, so I would, I'd be, I'd be happy to make it whatever is legally defensible.
It's already in this ordinance. I mean, it's not even a new item. I, all newly constructed buildings shall be solar ready.
So let me just say that if we do, next time we do hear somebody say, well, the state law says, you can refer them back to our ordinance that says they have to do it even if they're 98,000 square feet.
Which doesn't mean put them on, it means that the, the roof needs to support it.
Yes.
And, and, and so they, yeah, wire, yeah. Jan?
Jan Brand, Bryant Court, and thank you all. And I attended previous meetings, I, I prefer the old ordinance, and I'm glad that there was an explanation that the reason why they're doing this is because of the legality of it. However, was it Mr., what, the person who's on there?
Dave Roberts.
Roberts. Hi, Mr. Roberts. So one of the things you mentioned that in this new ordinance, that warehouses, that warehouses can't be a conditional use because it's not legally sustainable, but you said that the high intensity use could be banned. So I'm wondering why that, you could do that, but why the other ordinance wasn't sustainable?
No, that's a great question. Well, first of all, the, the, the original ordinance just banned warehouses totally, no matter what kind of warehouse, whatever, it was totally, it was just totally banned. And there was reasons for doing that. It was, the township was, it almost seemed to be under siege with the applications. And, you know, I think what we tried to do was allow the use, but regulate its intensity. So it's really not a ban on warehouses, it's a ban on higher intensity, light industrial uses that may and probably will mostly be warehouses, but don't necessarily have to be. So I think that that's, and we tried to base it on a foundation that was based on, on analysis of traffic data. So acknowledging the fact that there's traffic issues and they're getting worse, to kind of build the, the legal foundation for then, keeping out the types of warehouses that are known to be and shown to be in the data extremely high intensity, and regulating the remaining types of warehouses so that based on location, they would be permitted or not permitted based on their size and so on. So it's just, it's just a, it's, it's not a total ban anymore, it's a, a layered approach where the only uses that are, are continuing to be prohibited would be the ones that are, the ones that are the high, have the highest impact, and from what we know, are, have not yet located in Franklin, but so that we want to make, we want to try to protect the township from them coming in without, without prohibiting warehouses across the board.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
The, as far as you mentioned, you know, Franklin, like all these warehouses are in Franklin, you know, you know, when you pointed to the map where you have that picture of the map, I just, you know, Frank, there's, there's a lot, it's really located really in Ward Two, the 25 warehouses that were built, and there's other wards, there's another ward that has had a few warehouses, but it's really just that top portion because like you said, you know, with the 287 being so close by. But that traffic jam that you said, you know, and you mentioned all these are F-rated traffic spots, and, and F-rated, when I looked up what F-rated meant, was it's like in a constant traffic jam, and in Ward Two where all these warehouses are located, you know, we have four senior resident communities, we have other, you know, single family homes, we have residential communities that are just young adults, we have a few schools located. So all these warehouses are in Ward Two where our shopping's at and everything's at, and really like the lower part of that map, which is like the other half, you know, they don't have all that. So I just think, you know, there's 15,000 people that live in Ward Two, and I think you really need to be alerted to that amount of people that are affected. I'm just wondering if we know that off the traffic is at, you know, an F right now, and there's still 11, 12 more warehouses that need to be approved or seen, why would we even want to put this kind of thing into place that we would want to have more warehouses if we're at an F right now? You know, we're, we testified in Trenton last week, Assemblyman Joe Danielson, and it was all about just emergency personnel getting to places, it was based on Franklin and just the warehouse sprawl that's going on. And we had emergency services testifying how hard it is with traffic to get to people. So we're just, we're putting people's lives at stake right now. And I'm not just talking about diesel fume, I'm talking about an ambulance getting to, you know, a school for a child who's like suffering a head injury or something like that. So I'm just, I'm kind of astonished when I read the resolution today, I'm wondering, what's going on here? You know, we, we, we're at an F and there's more warehouses to be built, and now we're going to get rid of that other ordinance, and we're going to have a new ordinance in place that's going to allow warehouses, and we're at F right now? You know, I, I'm just, please explain.
It, it is hard to, to explain, but the, I think the, the one part of that answer is, I think we, members of the board had touched on it earlier this evening, that to prohibit, a blanket prohibition of a use is, is not an easy thing to defend in court to start with. And then the other thing to keep in mind is that warehouses are not the only permitted use in, or at least warehouses are not the only potential use in the business industrial zone. It has, there's a lot of other uses, all of which have their own trip generation characteristics, some that generate more traffic than warehouses might, and some that generate less perhaps. And the road network is a separate part of the township's infrastructure that a private property owner may not necessarily be responsible for. In some cases, it might be the county, in some cases, it might be the township or the state that are responsible, responsible for those intersections and, and modifying them if, if they they need to be modified. So there's really two separate, you know, issues going on. One is trying to control the land use and get a better handle on it and direct it where it makes the most sense and keep, and direct it away from residential areas. And the other part of it is, the road network, the condition that the road network is in, and to the extent that improvements are needed, how that, how that is handled and who's responsible, whether it's the township, the county, or the state.
So I like Mr. Orsini, Jim Orsini, saying earlier where he said about, like, there's another township in Hillsborough, and I think that before doing this and possibly putting our Ward 2 into worse conditions than it is now, that maybe we need to find out how we have no speculative warehouses that are built in Franklin Township. If there's another township that's actually doing that right now, and if you look at Hillsborough, they've been very successful, you know, in some of their warehouse, you know, not warehouses not in, there are warehouses, and I, I've always said that I believe in warehouses, it's just, you know, when it comes to, it's ruining our lives and endangering us. But I think really we should be looking at seeing what Hillsborough Township does and how they're able to not have speculative warehouses, and I'm surprised no one has, like, looked into that yet.
So, so yeah, I mean, that is one of the reasons I brought it up. And I think, as Mark said, I think, I think what this ordinance, in this master plan amendment, tried to do is prevent speculative warehouses by very specifically defining a light and a medium use and saying what that should be, and then prohibiting the high-intensity use. Now, the other crux of your question, though, Jan, that I kind of like, is, you know, the old, the old example I give to most people is, people will say, well, there's four gas stations on a corner. If I'm gas station number four, and the planning board says to me, I don't want to, you're denied because we have three, but it's zoned for a gas station, well, you'll be sued and you'll lose. And so the way to do that is through zoning. So this, effort here, is a unique opportunity to actually zone. And I mean, to your point, and I'm pretty sure that the ordinance does this, but maybe just to clarify for Dave or Mark, and I'm going to paraphrase your question a little bit, Jan, so hopefully I get it, I get it right. But where, where there is a closer proximity than say, oh, you know, you're out the end of Davidson Avenue, Atrium Drive, you're in World's Fair, you're not encountering any residences. But to your point, Jan, there's places where it's closer to residences. Does the ordinance or the master plan amendment, while you can zone things into inutility, and, you know, you're not necessarily going to say, oh, now we're going to make this an R40 zone, does it, does it sort of direct the lighter uses closer to the residential debt, where there is residences and maybe the more medium uses elsewhere? So that actually might have been somewhat of Jan's question, other than the overall disappointment with warehouses in general, but since we can't zone things into inutility, let's, let's talk about how to prescribe them. And I just wondered if you parse the BI zone in any way, and when it comes too close, I know you do with the design standards, where it comes closer to residences, but you do, for the uses, do you parse it in any way?
Well, I think that's the overall structure of the ordinance. The overall structure of the ordinance is those that, well, number one, those higher-intensity uses above 400,000 square feet and have the, and have the higher loading dock ratios, and fulfillment centers and postal hubs are specifically prohibited.
Right.
Period. Then you have the medium intensities, which is the 150,000 to 400,000. And then again, there's that certain ratio. Those are only permitted within one road mile of 287. So that's those medium intensity, again, directed away from the residential zones, closer to 287, and are supposed to be on roads that, and are required to be only on roads that are those minor collectors and above. So keep them on the more major roads. And then only those lighter-intensity ones, which up to 150,000, so those are, you know, smaller warehouses with lower loading dock ratios are permitted, you know, in the rest of the BI zone. But then, because some of those might be in proximity to residential, we put those, again, additional conditional use standards and design standards, larger buffers, larger building setbacks, noise study, et cetera, et cetera. Those were, so that's, those are on top of those conditional use standards that push them away from the residential zones.
Yeah, and to Dave's earlier point, like, the floor area ratio also controls some of that rate, because you'll need a large enough parcel of land, which may not be in proximity to residences.
Yeah, and I'd just like to reiterate again, I, my initial, you know, I'll leave it to Peter, too, if he wants to opine about the legality of saying, you know, no spec warehouses. I just, I just don't think, I think this ordinance is, just gets at the issue much more directly, because if you're saying no spec warehouse, what if somebody comes in and says, well, we know exactly what our user's going to be. It's going to be a fulfillment center, and it's going to be 500,000 square feet, and it's going to be next to a residential zone.
Yeah.
What does that do?
Maybe if you add that into the ordinance, that there's no spec warehouses in addition to, you know, this, maybe you combine the both, and then you have the best thing.
But I think we, by putting these standards in, we're forcing the developer to kind of make a decision of what kind of warehouse they're going to be. If they come in and they are, on their plan, they're 159, 149,000 square feet, and they have that certain loading dock ratio, that's what it's going to be. They're not going to come in with a building permit and change it. I mean, they don't change it now. I mean, if they, if this, if an applicant comes in for a building permit and they change the look of the building, we deny it, you know, let alone the loading dock ratio. So, you know, I'm not so sure if it's, you know, XYZ company versus ABC company, it's going to be a warehouse of that size, of that loading dock ratio. And I guess, and I'll speak as well, because this question was brought up at the community meeting of why are we doing this? And it's, it's a very good question. I'll just speak from my own perspective as a township planner. I used the word a blank slate. Right now, it's a blank slate. Somebody comes in, wants to build a warehouse, there's no standards. So what do they do? They, they can go to the zoning board. There's nothing in the, the master plan that says what we want and what we don't want. You know, this is after a year and a half-long process, two community meetings, steering committee with, you know, I think four or five meetings of the steering committee to develop this. You know, I think these are, this is a, an open community, public-led process that has helped develop these standards. And we're basically telling the development community, this is what's acceptable, this is what's not. It not only directs the applications in terms of, you know, telling them, you know, if they want, if they want, you know, to be a permitted use, go to the planning board, you have to abide by these standards. Even if we have use variances or conditional use standards, now they have to go to the zoning board. We have the master plan that talks about why we wanted these types of warehouses directed to these different areas. And the applicant has to justify why they're doing something that's contrary to the master plan. You know, so that gives the community, I think, a lot more direction, a lot more power or control over this issue than frankly, you know, putting their heads in the sand and not addressing it. That's my opinion.
I just want to add really quickly, because we do keep bringing it up. I double-checked, Hillsborough since January is actively being sued for that ordinance. Yeah, and so I just, I feel like to Mark's point, this is a very tangible, practical, realistic way to get our results without ending up where we were in the first place with our other ordinance.
Well, and the only other thing I would add is, you have a land use ordinance, you don't have a land user ordinance. Like, we don't focus in on who's coming in to occupy a particular property with a particular use. We regulate what the uses we think would be permitted and what the conditions for those uses are to make, you know, individual, specific decisions based upon who the applicant is and what their use is going to be, I think is something that you don't want to get involved in.
One quick question along that same line. If Peter, maybe you can clarify, because I understand that what appears to be like a contradiction, right? From the public standpoint, in one sense, we're saying we have banned these types of warehouses, fulfillment centers, so on and so forth. A spec warehouse is a type of warehouse facility. It may not categorically be listed, but when you have spec warehouses, they become a category by themselves. So why you can't say we're banning spec in addition to fulfillment, so on and so forth? That's the first question. And then, why you can't say geographically, because Ward 2 is inundated with warehouses already, we have reached a threshold where more warehouses will decimate the community from a health and an environmental standpoint? Can't you have a geographic restriction based upon the safety and the welfare of the people in that ward?
You have zone-based regulations, you don't have ward-based regulations. So it's just a question of, and I'll defer to the planner to some extent, it's, you decide where you think particular uses are appropriate within particular zones. So you would have to look at those zones and decide whether or not you want to rezone those areas of your municipality, and that's a much more global, you know, issue than what regulations you might want for uses within those particular zones. Moving back to spec, spec, I don't see spec as a use, spec is whether or not you know who the user is going to be of a particular facility. So under that theory, if you don't know who's going to occupy, you know, an office building, is it a spec office building? Then do you not get to build it because you don't know who's going to occupy it? It's still going to occupy, be occupied for a particular use with particular parameters. And the parameters are what are important, not necessarily who the user is. So given the regulations that Mr. Roberts and Mr. Healy have created in trying to define your warehouse uses and create low, high, and medium-intensity uses, I think allows you to have a greater understanding of what type of warehouse may or may not ultimately be there, rather than knowing whether or not the user is a particular entity.
Yeah, yeah, and that always confused me, too, to be honest. I mean, spec is not a, an empty box. I mean, it's, spec means you don't know the end user, right, whether it's going to be, like Peter said, a, I don't know, this office or this company or that, but it's still going to be offices. But I think, I think, you know, the benefit of, of the kind of work that has gone into this master plan and this ordinance is, whenever you get a chance to dictate to the developer, this is a good thing. It's defensible, and it's, it's specific enough that they have to meet all these conditions to have a conforming application that they can actually deem complete and submitted. And then when it gets to the board, we actually have a lot more control because we have all the traffic counts that are actually going to become part of the master plan, which I didn't realize, which is great. So if somebody comes up and says, oh, you know, it's level C, and, you know, our traffic is, it's not going to matter, it's still going to be level C, and Dave's report shows it's level F now, then, then we're going to have some words with that applicant. So, you know, I think, I think to the extent that we, it's not legally defensible to have a ban on any use, oh, that's just like planning law, unfortunately.
It wasn't a ban, they had to go to the zoning board. So it wasn't really a ban, they just had to go to the zoning board, and it's really been working so far, and warehouses have been approved.
Yeah, just because they were deemed complete, it's, actually, you're incorrect. We've had, we've had plenty of warehouses applications since that moratorium. They go to the zoning board, not based on whether there's a, there's a moratorium, plenty have come to the planning board. They go to the zoning board based on whether they require a use variance or not.
Yeah, well, let me, yeah, let me, let me clarify. We've had two applications to the zoning board. One's been approved. It was about a quarter mile from 287, and it was about 80,000 square feet. So the board, for the reasons probably that we're discussing, permitted it. We have another one, another application that's currently pending before the board, and that one is, it's larger, it's on Davidson Avenue north of 287, and again, about a quarter mile from, from the interchange. I'm not going to comment on that because it's, it's an ongoing application. But, you know, but those two have been, you know, again, closer to 287, and within this, you know, under this plan, they would be, I don't know if they comply with all the conditional use standards because it, but bottom line is, in a large sense, they're where this ordinance would be encouraging warehouses, because they're in close proximity. We could get another application tomorrow, we could get another application tomorrow for a 500,000-square-foot warehouse next to a residential zone for a fulfillment center. I think it's a lot better to have an ordinance in place that addresses that and a master plan that addresses that. So that, again, so we're directing them by the ordinance to, you know, to the locations that we want them. And if they choose to go to the zoning board, we have something in the master plan that speaks to where we want them to go and why we want them to go there. And they have a much higher hurdle than our master plan right now, which is basically silent on it.
Yeah, no, I mean, developers love a vacuum, and they'll, will fill it. And so that's not what you want, if you can help that.
Okay. Metler's Road is considered a connector or made according to the, your document. And I'm just wondering, with the, at the last meeting, we discussed rerouting traffic and which way traffic was going to go through, and I think that's what Norm was trying to say. And I was wondering, from that last meeting, was that ever decided, how traffic was going to be routed? And in addition to that comment, just so you know, there's, supposedly, there's not supposed to be any trucks on Schoolhouse Road in front of where we live and on Metler's Road. However, if a truck is making a delivery, they're allowed to go wherever they want. So it's really hard to enforce a rule like that because, you know, how are you going to stop a truck where they're not supposed to be? Because they could just tell you, oh, I'm making a delivery. I mean, that would just tax our police force and whatnot. So I'm just wondering, with this plan we had spoken about at your last meeting, how traffic was going to be routed.
Well, I'll let Dave speak to the routing and the master plan, but the Metler's Road's a scenic road, and one of the conditional use standards is that these uses are not permitted on a scenic road.
Yes, and right, and I think the, what we had talked about at the last community meeting was trying to show potential truck routes in the circulation plan element. And as you recall, Jan, there was a lot of concern about that, especially if we're trying to figure out how to get trucks from the southern portion of the BI zone down by Veronica, transfer through the township to get to the 287 interchanges, and there's almost no way to be able to do that without passing, pass through somebody's neighborhood, even on the higher-order streets like minor collectors and major collectors and so on. So we, basically, we, I think based on the feedback from that meeting, we took out the actual proposed truck routes and left that to a, for the township and the county to work out. The other thing that came out, that came up at that meeting was a suggestion about weight limits, because there are certain roads that potentially should not have trucks on them based on the weight capacity of the roadway. That's also, because I, and I checked with our, our traffic folks, that's also controlled by the county as well. So what the master plan recommends with regard to the circulation element is that, that there should be truck routes and road constraints based on weight limits at some point, if possible, and that the township work with the county to try to figure out the best routes for that without us trying to sort of put it in a plan without the county's input. So that's the reason why it doesn't appear in the, in the current version of the master plan update.
And Jan, just given the time, this will be your last, last question. Again, we'll have a whole nother hearing probably, like you heard, the end of April. So let's certainly hear, hear from more than.
No, I also, I also want to point out, Mark, you know, can you state for the record the website, or the mailbox, or whatever, if people do have questions after tonight that they may think of? That would be good, so that they could do it.
We got the Zoom call to work and we can't, but we can't get the microphones.
Mayesh Muchala, 36 Bryant Court, Canal Walk. It's all Canal Walk only. Yeah, I have one suggestion, one in this new master plan that you are trying to adopt. We have seen, and I think we brought it as a CVAG, we brought it to the court also, that B9 lied in their application by not disclosing that they are actually allowing a truck traffic of 900,000 square feet warehouse, not a 220,000 square feet, which is B9 warehouse. They are giving the full access to a land-logged 660,000 square feet horse farm warehouse application, where they are given in writing, binding to the, that warehouse, that we, they can pass all the trucks through B9, which basically creates a 900,000 square feet warehouse traffic on the B9 property and into the Schoolhouse Road, because Horse Farm Road.
All right. So you're talking about a specific application that I do believe is in litigation? So we can't talk about that?
No, we are not. I'm making, the suggestion I wanted to make in your master plan amendment is that a warehouse must give a declaration that what they have applied for is the only use of this warehouse and its property, not only the warehouse, but also the property that they are using. And they are using that property. That declaration should be given that what we have said and we have no other undertaking and no other liability to any surrounding warehouses or anything like that. Some sort of a language is required in your amendment.
I think, I know what he's talking about. But at the same time, we just had an application on Veronica, where, first of all, I'll say, the other application is in a zone where warehouses were never permitted. I'll just leave it at that. It's a zoning board application. And frankly, I don't know where that is, if they're moving forward or not. But I believe what he's talking about is basically having one warehouse gain access to the road through another warehouse site. And we just had an example on Veronica, where that was actually perceived by the board, for good reason, as a good thing, because they were consolidating and minimizing the number of curb cuts.
Yeah.
So I'll just say that. And that, in that particular context, it had actually made for good, for better site design.
Yeah.
So in another context, it might not be a good idea.
Yeah. But to, to your point, that applicant would have to reveal everything about their use. So like, even if a warehouse were to come in, let's call it Warehouse A, and do X, and Warehouse B comes in and says, well, we're going to, we're going to leverage something on Warehouse A to, you know, like you're saying, they would have to tell us that. They would have to be part of the application. It would have to be part, whether it's parking, or whether it's access, or a driveway, or any type of shared easement, would all have to be revealed in that application. So I don't think they would need a separate declaration because they would be required in the application to disclose that.
Yeah.
Or later, they would have to come back in and explain to you that they were providing that access.
Yeah, I understand that point, that you're right. And as you said, we are not going to discuss B9, but B9 did not do that part.
Okay.
They were aware of it. And so when that application is being considered or reconsidered, that point should be taken into account. That application cannot be considered as complete. But again, it is a legal case right now, so you don't want to take it for that one.
I'll just say duly noted. This young lady would be the last speaker of the night, and then, and we have to close. And again, I'm going to have Mark give you the mailbox and how to communicate, because who knows, you might think of something after this meeting. And of course, we will have another hearing. Please.
Hi. Wendy Park from Canal Walk Boulevard. I just tried to understand, you had the low and median intensity warehouses. But say a low intensity goes in, and then next year, another low intensity right next to it, next year, another low intensity right next to it. So in effect, you've got mediums now in an area that's not one mile from an intersection, but near the residences where it was not intended to be, you know, in effect. How, is there an overall plan that says, no, you cannot do this?
Good, 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 good question. Mark, Dave, who wants to take that? I can't.
That came up in a meeting that we had.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think generally, I would say that, that we can't necessarily, it's, it is on a site-by-site basis. So, you know, if, if one application comes in one year, and then two years later, we get an application next door for another one, I don't know. We are controlling it in, and controlling issue in a lot of different ways in terms of, again, everything we've discussed tonight, in terms of its overall location, all of that stuff. Dave talked about the FAR and the, and the lot areas that would be required to even develop these uses. You know, I think all of these things are going to put limits on not just the location, but also the intensity of the warehouses. But I don't think we can necessarily, I don't know any way we control if ABC company owns that site, gets an approval for a warehouse, two years later, XYZ wants to build a warehouse on their site.
Yeah.
You know, as long as they meet those standards.
I think it's similar to the question that, you know, I was wrestling with when Jan was up, which is, you can't really, can't really parse the zone and say, kind of like you're saying, like, oh, you know, maybe there's a part of the zone where you could have two low-intensity uses, but not three next to each other. Yeah.
It's tough, but it does make the low and medium kind of moot when.
I think practically, you will be limited because of the, and I think people don't appreciate, because maybe this is the first time a lot of people have seen the actual standards. The floor area ratio, like, like Dave was saying, of, of whatever it is, .362 for, for one of them, would require like 150,000 square foot warehouse to have a 10-acre site. That amount of land around these parcels is diminishing. And maybe some, some way, the only way somebody could acquire it is by merging two parcels, right? So that floor area ratio and, and the loading docks, you know, one for 10,000 or 5,000, is a really good way to control it, more so than anything you could do, because it's an actually a physical thing that you can, you can measure and, and it's, it's.
So there's no way to put an overall?
No, there's no way to do like an overlay and say, oh, I'm going to have a light intensity here, I'm going to have a medium intensity here, I'm banning high intensity for reasons.
I think the question is, is there any way to say, we're going to permit this, but after it gets to 5 million, no more?
Yeah.
I don't think there's really a mechanism to do that.
No. You do it through the way you're doing it, which is basically, you look at the parcels and you say, if I do .362, I don't see a 10-acre parcel that anybody can build on.
Right. If I, if I might, Mr. Chairman, I think the steering committee, I believe it was their last meeting prior to the second community meeting, we were talking about the standards. And one of the concerns that they raised was, how do we keep someone from double dipping? And I think it's, it's, it's related to Wendy's question in that, you know, who's to say you could, you know, you could build a warehouse that's, that's 149,000 square feet, and then subdivide the parcel and come in the following year with another 149,000 square foot warehouse to keep under the 150,000 square feet. And that's one of the reasons why we chose to do, it's kind of the, it's kind of the same thing only in the other direction, where instead of merging properties, you're subdividing properties. And that's why the FAR standard, and it's been, you know, addressed. I think the, everyone did a great job of describing why we went in that direction. It forces the, whether, it's all driven by square footage, because the floor area, floor area is based on the ratio of the total square footage of the building to the total square footage of the parcel. So that, that .362 FAR is what drives the size of the parcel up in order for it to be compliant. And it is also a condition of a conditional use. So it's not something that you can try to come in and get a bulk variance for. It's, it's, it's an FAR standard. So there's a, already a D5 standard in the, in the municipal land use law for it that kicks it, it kicks it to the zoning board if you don't need it. But also, it's a condition of the, it's one of the conditions of the conditional use standards. So it just makes it that much more, you know, it makes it much harder to overcome in terms of trying to get relief. And that's, that was the whole idea, was to keep the, the parcel sizes in proportion to the size of the buildings.
Okay. Lots of key in mind, that's Warehouse Row. You feel like they could get away with it.
Well, thank you. Make a motion to close the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let Mark know, and let everybody know how to get in touch.
Sure. So if you go to our website, I'll go to the main page, so franklintwpnj.org. This is our homepage. Go to the committees. There'll be a dropdown menu that'll pop up. And then under Planning Board, you'll see BI Study. So first, basically, all the materials throughout the process have been put up on the website as we've gone along, including the, the notes from all the meetings and the videos from the different meetings that we've had are all on there. And then at the bottom, there's a comment section. You can click on there. So that's what Dave spoke about before. The emails come to me, then I forward them to Dave. And then, you know, throughout the process, we've, you know, brought those, as Dave did tonight, you know, brought some of those comments to your attention, and we brought them to the steering committee's attention, you know, when we felt they were, you know, valid comments for, for, for consideration. So that's, that's, that's basically it.
Thanks, Mark. So thanks, everybody. You know, definitely, the planning board should avail themselves of these resources as well. For those of you who are new to the planning board, I can tell you that there was a day that these type of work sessions were regular, and there were three meetings. None of them were canceled. We were here till 12:00, 1:00 in the morning with applications on the first and third. And then on the fourth, we were probably here till at least this time doing other stuff. So times have changed a lot. You guys have got it easy. And I've got war stories to tell. So with that, motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next meeting is next week, regular meeting.